We slept last night for waking us up today, Lord, and getting us here to be able to conduct our business. Lord, we pray that you watch over us and give us the knowledge and wisdom to make the decisions that need to be made for the city and people of Smith Station. Lord, we pray that you bless our leaders, Lord. Bless them to get them to work together again, Lord, to open up the government and conduct the business that they need to do for the American people. Lord, we pray that you bless our first responders, the schools, and the city members. These are our blessings, we pray, Lord, in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the city council, record the order on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. For roll call, please.
Mr. Strangler?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mayor Cooley?
Here. All right, you have in your packets and previously by email the minutes from the regularly scheduled council meeting on September 23rd. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, they should approve the thread.
Motion to have approved the minutes.
Sir. Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Green? Yes, one thing just caught my eye, the additional 650, is that all it was? It was on, I had 6,500, but it was just 650 from the additional room?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Upper room.
One more council need to vote on that, please, ma'am.
Mayor Cooley? Thank you.
You didn't copy the vote?
I did call Strangler?
No.
Mr. Strangler, do you approve my minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
We got Mr. Jackson on our mind tonight.
Mayor Cooley, do you approve my minutes? You want me to try to mark better?
Okay, you're correct.
Uh, move that we suspend the rules and resolutions so we can further conduct business tonight.
Okay, that brings us to resolutions.
Sir?
Okay, uh, resolution 2025 dash 621.
Resolution for the city of Smith Station, Alabama, authorizing funds to assist the American across Central East Alabama chapter. Annual contribution in the amount of $5,500, that was budgeted.
Okay, I have a motion.
Motion to approve this resolution, 2025-621.
Mr. Strangler?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Yes.
All right, resolution 2025 dash 622.
A resolution for the city of Smith Station, Alabama, authorizing Mayor Cooley to allocate funds for the East Alabama Chamber of Commerce membership. This is another annual allocation in the amount of $5,500, that was budgeted.
I'll make a motion to accept this. I'll say that.
Mr. Strangler?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Cooley?
Resolution 2025-623.
A resolution for the city of Smith Station, Alabama, authorizing the mayor to approve the application for an ABC license, 020 restaurant retail liquor from Anillo's Pizza that will be located at 2245 LeRouge 430 in Panther Parkway. Smith Station, Alabama, pending the ABC approval and approval from Sheriff J. Jones.
I make a motion, accept this.
Mr. Strangler?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor?
That brings us down to public comments. Okay, is Alana Coleman?
John Coleman? Well, maybe roots. There you go. Hold on a second, Mrs. Coleman, can I reach them? You're testifying before public body, each member of the city council of the city of Smith Station is a public servant. Any false statement made to a public servant for the purpose of acquiring a benefit may be prosecuted as provided in section 13A dash 10 dot 109, Code of Alabama 1975. Sorry about that.
Okay, I can go ahead?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm still a few months ago talking about my seventh tank, so I'm coming back talking about the same thing. Um, I'm still living like I'm in the 1800s. And I want to thank this farmer for that phone call and the two others I received. I'm very appreciative of that and I'm still waiting, so, and I'm waiting patiently. And also, um, I want to let you know, the last time Councilman Jackson mentioned about how long I had been in my house and we said it was 28 years. The problem then just start, it started when I first moved in, I was with the seventh tank, and maybe a month or so after that, but anyway, um, back in 2012, my daughter and my grandchildren had to move in with me. They stayed with me for two years, from 2012 to 2014. 2012, my tank was pumped four times, 2013, eight times, 2014, seven times. I have them seats here to show. Once they moved out in 2014, I didn't have a problem, because I was by myself. I didn't have a problem again until last year, when my granddaughter had to move in with me. That's when it started all over again. So it's like my home is the home of the gatherings, for family gatherings. Now I can't even have that, because I'm afraid that, will my toilet flush? Will it overflow? I have, and I shouldn't have to worry about that and invite great friends over. But my, um, question is, a few years ago, um, they issued vouchers out. The vouchers were worth $200, and if I remember correctly, they were first come, first served. I'm not just doing this for me, but anybody else that have problems with their seventh tank. So we had to meet over here, I think it's the Lord, the Lord's love, to get those vouchers. And they, they made them where they expired at a certain time. But, uh, like I said, it was $200, so I'm just asking, is there anything, I you mentioned about the fundraiser, no fundraiser, okay, I get that, but vouchers. Seemed like something could be done to give us some kind of relief because that money, that was a lot of money for me, and still is, and still, and it's still going on. One thing for certain, two things for sure, I feel like that, that subdivision, and I've seen other people there having problems having their tanks pumped. It shouldn't be like that. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Ms. Coleman, what was the vouchers for exactly?
The vouchers were for you to get your tanks pumped.
Oh, just to get them pumped?
Just, just to get them pumped. And like I said, they were just...
And the voucher came from?
Sir?
From who?
Um, I'm not sure who they were from.
From the company.
I'm not sure exactly who they were from. I, uh, I know is we were able to, it was like first come, first served. Can't even remember how I found out about it.
Okay.
But...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Can I read you something?
Miss, you may.
You're testifying for public body, each member of the city council of the city of Smith Station is a public servant. Any false statement made to a public servant for the purpose of acquiring a benefit may be prosecuted as provided in section 13A dash 10 dot 109, Code of Alabama 1975. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm here to complain about one of your coaches at your Smith Station ball field. Um, it's my understanding, he's had several complaints. The name is Justin Myers. My son, his special needs, um, he's on autism spectrum. I've asked him and his wife, who is a coach, um, to please don't yell at him. He will shut down. He doesn't like to be touched all the time as they go into call and, you know, at the end of the game and so forth. It's been an ongoing problem. I complained, um, to Justin Myers about this, and it kind of all blew up last week.
You mean Wimberly?
Wimberly.
Wimberly, I'm sorry. Okay, he's back there, I'm sorry. Um, anyway, it kind of all blew up last week when, at the end of the game, this coach, my, my son would not put his hand in and call, as they call it, at the end of the game. And he informed the entire team and my son that he was not a team player. And I don't know if y'all know much about special needs, but they have to be treated a little bit different. I've asked him to treat him the same, you know, as he would any other team player, but he's not doing that. His wife yells and screams at him while he's playing. All kinds of things have been going on. He's had that. It's just, it's gotten to be ridiculous. Um, and at one point, he told my son he couldn't play all if he didn't have a hat. There's nothing, I've talked to the president of the league, there is nothing written in the rules that he has to have his hat. He misplaced it. I found it, but the fact is, he told him he couldn't play if he didn't have it. So he sit over there crying because he's not going to be able to play. He's 12 years old, well, he's a child, and he has special needs. It's not fair. I confronted him, I might have been out of line. I told him and his wife both they were complete idiots, that they were not treating everybody equally. I also, at one point, said the word damn, I'm sorry. My motions were going, and I said it. But the fact is, he stood in front of me and told me it was his choice, he could do what he wanted to, it's his team. At the beginning of practices, at the very first practice, he started recruiting for his travel team. The only three players on his, on this team that my son is playing on, that he pays attention to and coaches are his three travel ball team players. I just want fairness. I don't think he should be the coach. That's my opinion.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir, you may.
When you went to the league press, did he say he could do anything about it, or talk to the coach, or just dropped?
He, he called Mr. Wimberly, um, and they discussed it. Am I correct?
But the league press, and that's, that's who, as far as I know, should be able to do something about it.
He told him to treat them fairly, but he's not. This isn't the first complaint, am I correct? He's had lots of complaints, even last year he had complaints against this coach. I mean, it's continuing, ongoing thing. He should not be allowed to coach. And he doesn't treat any of the children, which he shouldn't.
But he does treat the three traveling?
Yes, and, yes, and one of them is his son. Yes, he does.
Thank you.
You want? I have pictures also of him allowing three-year-old, uh, five-year-old and 11-year-old all over the field while the kids are playing ball. And the rules state, no one under the age of 16 is allowed on that field unless they're playing ball. I got pictures of them tossing the ball back and forth during the game, where a coach, one of the coaches had to catch a ball with her foot that came off of the ball, off of the field, to keep it from hitting the five-year-old. She picked it up, handed it to the five-year-old, and him and his sister were out there tossing the ball on the game's go.
Is, is there anybody that can comment on this, or do you have to wait for your panel?
Yep, I can wait.
Oh, Heather.
Hi, ma'am.
How are you? You're testifying for public body, each member of the city council of the city of Smith Station is a public servant. Any false statement made to a public servant for the purpose of acquiring a benefit may be prosecuted as provided in section 13A dash 10 dot 109, Code of Alabama 1975. Thank you.
Um, well, starting off with, with Ms. Stevens about rules. Um, we've asked for bylaws since August, where are the bylaws now? So we can actually see what's out there, because they're not. They, I've had a different issue with my son's coach, as we take care of with Mr. Wimberly and the president, and that's maybe discussed now. But I've asked, what are the bylaws? And they say they gave them out to all the coaches beforehand, but if you can't get access to them, then how do we handle those?
I give you and...
We do those resolutions, the bylaws.
There were copies behind it.
I have, I have enough of those interclaiming resolutions, and there's no problem. Did you tell, when I talked so to you on this afterwards, you told me that, um, the rules, so I could get the bylaws for you.
Yes. If you remember correctly, I told you that I thought that I found what I thought they were, and that we were going to have to determine if that's what they were. And I've yet to been able to determine that, and he and I, we're just coming off of an election budget here and all that, so we've not had a chance to sit down and completely get through that, because that's going to be a project, not only for softball, but for every league.
Uh, that's a good point.
So, that's where you...
But I think having rules will eliminate certain questions like this that we have, that we'd be able to bring up to a parks and rec committee, which we're still waiting on a meeting for that, or, um, there have been complaints asking on social media, because they, people don't know where to go with their concerns of what's happening at the state. Um, we all do come time to schedule a meeting, can it be in the leagues of this, where people can actually come, because taking off during the workday is not very feasible for someone who has jobs and kids and everything else like that. Would y'all take up consideration when our scheduled parks and rec committee need? And properly advertise it to, to people who don't know where to go to?
Okay.
Okay. I just think it would help eliminate stuff on social media that people don't know where to go. Um, but that would, um, and I'm concerned parent, on smashers, our coaches, they come in here fighting for fairness and everything else, and I'm coming here asking for our abilities too, like, will's the update on anything that's been, um, going on that we are coming here asking for? Because they're still haven't come in here and asked questions. Banners still have to fight for it since July, when we came in here first time. Financial fairness, what's going on with all points and everything else.
Understand, the city is responsible for the maintenance and all of the fields and buildings out there. And that pretty much is a lens, iron, responsibility out there. The actual day-to-day operations of various leagues belong to the various boards that are out there. For them to take that in control. Apparently that's not happening, and we'll address that issue with society issue.
I didn't know that would be something that can bring up in parks and rec, since it falls under, that and a committee would come in?
It should go before the parks and rec, before it comes to the city council.
Absolutely.
That is the procedure.
Yeah, then that's why I'm on line, so we don't have to come to all the...
Basically, the procedure is, you take Mr. Wimberly back there in the back, and then he brings it to us, and if you don't like his resolution, then you can bring it to us.
Yeah, mine wasn't put in a volunteer thing for, with Mr. Wimberly, and the last colleague got a couple weeks ago said that, um, he doesn't have time to look at his volunteering part, and he said, you know, she's back in the... So that's why I'm asking him, like, are we going to have one soon? Because there's a lot of people that stuff on social media, and I know they kind of need a place to, to talk about what's going on there. So nobody don't have to come bring it to y'all, you got to the right people.
Do y'all take it to your board?
Um, I've spoken to JB about this different issue that I have ongoing out there, but, you know...
So you've had to taken it to the board?
Well, I don't...
But you're here.
I don't know who the board is for the league.
Yeah, the president of the board, so it's just spoken to JB, he's the president.
But then you're the other board member, so if he's not there to discuss it too, yeah, I don't know who they are. So, okay, well, thank you for your time.
May I, huh? It's your turn.
Thanks.
What heard for that statement?
Your testifying for public body, each member of the city council of the city of Smith Station is a public servant. Any false statement made to a public servant for the purpose of acquiring a benefit may be prosecuted as provided in section 13A dash 10 dot 109, Code of Alabama 1975.
Okay, thank you. This isn't why I'm here, but I just wanted to get on the record, Coach Myers has coached my grandson in the past. He is not a part of the strap ball team, and he's always been a great coach with my grandson. And I understand they have twelve different personalities, but it would be impossible for these volunteer coaches to handle each child independently, so please take that into consideration. I'm here because we're trying to get a donation drive together for underprivileged kids in this community to be able to play ball, whose parents can't afford all the equipment. And it's going to be the first annual, hopefully it'll be many. We're just trying to get old equipment from other people, you know, like their old bats, their old gloves, their old hats. And I've already cleared it for JB out of the park, but I came to put a flyer up here, and they told me I wasn't allowed. And I emailed you, but I, to please reconsider, but I never got an email back, so I came up here to see if you guys could vote on it, where we could just put this up to try and get donations, it's the 27th, and then we can take it down right after. And if that's not possible, if you would consider like a community board out by, where we do the Christmas tree or something, a place for something like this to go. Because they say they need more kids out of the youth complex to participate, but a lot of families can't afford all the equipment that goes with it. And so me and my husband are going to store it, we're going to clean it, and it's spring and also it'll be available free to any family that needs it, um, but I just want to get the word out, and so that's why I'm here, to see if you guys could vote on it, or let me put it up on the door or something. The only thing that we could do with it is post it on Facebook. We can't post it on our city Facebook page, we can't post it here in City Hall. If we allow one establishment to post in City Hall, then we have to allow everybody, from churches to schools, to all different kind of athletic groups, and as a city, we cannot do that. Facebook would be great. But we can do the, the Facebook posts. And if you guys could consider voting on putting up a community bulletin board outside where we could put this kind of things, like I said, we're not looking for money from people, it's just people to donate. I took it to the RIT and asked people to put it up at their churches, this and that, because the more we get, the more kids we can help. And ultimately, that's what it's about, helping kids of Smith Station. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I give that to you for the Facebook? Thank you.
So you have fun.
I appreciate everyone helping, thank you.
City council?
You're testifying for public body, each member of the city council of the city of Smith Station is a public servant. Any, any false statement made to a public servant for the purpose of acquiring a benefit may be prosecuted as provided in section 13A dash 10 dot 109, Code of Alabama 1975. Thank you.
Good evening. Y'all, y'all know me. I'm going to touch first on what was said. I have been coaching a long time here in Smith Station. This is the first complaint that I've ever brought forward before y'all. I'm not sure how many Mr. Wimberly has had on me. I did, it was one of the spring dealing with a child that had some attitude issues. He was at 12 years old, was in the F Word out on the ball field, and just thought he could do what he wanted to. As far as treating the kids unfairly, I mean, I feel like I treated anyone unfairly. I heard Son has a prime playing position, he is my starting first baseman. I don't know how much more fair I can be. He was my starting pitcher last night. Again, I don't know how much more fair I can be. If by hollering in a game, you mean when you're trying to get him to make a play or do something to help him, and they're on the other side of the field from you, and you have to holler at them to get their attention, amongst everybody else screaming and hollering them, okay. But as far as screaming at them, or cussing at a child, or anything like that, I have never, never done that, nor has my wife. So that's just something that I wanted to put out there. But also on the Parks and Rec committee that I touched about before, having a meeting, and I spoke with Mr. Wimberly the other night, when he was calling the fields, and he basically told me that he does not have time to schedule one. I don't, I don't know what all these duties are he does, but I do know at work, that if I tell somebody I don't have time to do it, well, that doesn't fly. But I think there can be time set aside at some point to have a meeting for 30 minutes or so. I just don't feel like that he's doing his job the way it should be done. And that's why I had a question.
I got, I got a question for Mr. Wimberly.
Yes, sir.
Who, who sets these meetings?
For Parks and Rec?
Yes.
Um, Cindy, uh...
Oh, Cindy. I mean, I, I kind of said all the committee needs to know, and you, you know, when you're really just by the answer, or everybody speak for me.
Does the president have any say-so on these meeting times or anything, at all, any kind of to?
From the board?
No, no.
That's just for the, the Parks and Rec committee being here.
Only thing I would like to say, uh, when is the league board go meet? Whenever the league board meet, since I'm the chairman of the park administration, I would like to meet the board, and see what their responsibilities are towards whatever need to be done.
I would also like to.
I would like to do that, because, uh, I think that's where you still need to stay
You're there.
We'll find that out.
Okay.
We'll find that out.
We asked.
All right.
He just signed it because he's recording.
No, it's okay. Thank you, there.
Joanne Hall?
I just signed that. Oh, okay, she's our speaker.
Okay. Any other councilmen or officers?
Planning commission had, had been meeting last week, and we voted on pre, pre-reolutions. Oh, not resolutions.
Cases?
Cases, right. One was a preliminary plaque, requested approval for card and cell division, Tim Thomason Construction. We suggested approving for that. Other one was a lot division of parcel C on the Robin, Robin Herb, and this is a personal property, but another family member is splitting that, so we voted to approve that one. The last one was a rezoning of property on Stafford Road, uh, BB Strong LLC. They wanted to put townhomes and rentals on this property, and we voted no on that one, on that one, because it was going to interrupt the makeup of the current subdivision that's there.
What was the rezon request from to?
R5.
R5.
And R5 is high density, right?
Multiple townhouses.
Well, and it could even go to apartments. R5 can, right?
Correct.
So R, R2, we've done duplexes as what before?
R3.
R3. So your duplexes and things like...
So your duplexes and things like that, you can get it R3. But R5, you're going all the way up to high density.
Correct. That's because of rotten mill of all the subdivisions, Lincoln Charge, Dr. Woods, Rosswood. Their, their concern was Regals bringing their home base.
And possibly apartments.
Correct.
We didn't know exactly what they were going to do, but we did think that that would, that would be a good decision.
So the planning and zoning denied that rezon request?
Right.
Do we feel like that'll come before the city council? Do we know?
I think it's going to come back before us, the planning commission, with a new approval.
A new, like a new rezon request?
Right, right.
You want it? All right, I'd like to reference our media, CCTV back there in the back again. We're thinking of Wes tonight is surgery. Any other media here present that I missed? Oh, that's right, that's right. And he's with, uh, Susan Lee's on my right. Okay. That being said, I will entertain the motion.
It's your turn.
Make this motion that this house will be adjourned.